Fiscal year 2010. So that was moving the money from the Economic Development Fund into the General Fund. The money originally for that particular fund had come from the General Fund a number of years ago. I don't want to get into all the hairy details, but it was moved from the General Fund into that fund to pay for economic development things. And since that was its only source of revenue was that one-time transfer, and at the time we had started the Lakota and Friedman master plan on Thorne Dale corridor, we spent the money that was in there for that purpose, and then we moved that particular expenditure into the Community Development Department that particular year. And then we moved the money from the Economic Development Fund into the General Fund as an offset for moving it in. It was just an unneeded cost center at that point, so we consolidated. And that's just a reflection of the closing out of the money that came from the General Fund originally coming back into the General Fund.
Okay. I see where this heading down this water thing is. I just want to make it sure, make it known here, in 2009, we had $400,000 for that. And then in 2004, 2010, that's where it jumped to 68, 88. And it's been staying there for 2010, 2011, projected for 2012. What is the rate again, of the rate that the county has pushed on to, from the city of Chicago, of moving the water to DuPage County to us? The percentage? Because this is what's going to show here, our percentage. I'm going to sit up here through this whole budget, and it's going to come back to water. And I'm not going to sit up here and take this, that the city is raising their tax, the water rates skyrocketing. It's not happening. DuPage County Water, Water Commission is passing the fees to us, and we're doing a pass-through. And I'm not going to sit up here and tolerate it. I'm going to sit here and fight that it's not the city of Wooddale. So I would like the percentage of what DuPage County has raised us from 2009, 10, 11, 12. And this thing is going to come up through this whole budget. And I'm ready to fight with it, because I'm tired of it. Brad, could you answer that?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll have to go back and get actual numbers on that, because I don't want to misspeak, because I know it is a hot button right now for a number of you. Although, as my memory serves me, the last few years, the county, it's been, I hate to throw the mayor in this, he might remember better than I, it's been 15 to 16 percent each of the last couple of years. And the last one was just a flat 13 cents, which I believe was 18 percent above what their rate was at the time, due to the financial situation that they ran into down there.
Follow-up, please. Yes, please.
Madam Chairman, as you know that this is going to be a topic as we go along in this budget, is it possible that we could get a breakdown of how much administration costs for the water rates? Basically, what, where the money goes for, for the water? Administration, from DuPage County, the rates, how it has increased, the whole shebang?
I think it's a fair request. I don't want to slow down the other funds within the General Fund.
I don't have-
But it's just like one item that we can come back to on the 31st, if that's what we have to do. Or is it something that we can design right now? Mr. Wilson?
Just thinking about, historically, it's taken two nights to get through, through the budget book.
Uh huh.
And as optimistic as I was, I think it's going to take two nights this time, too. That being said, the Water Fund, based upon its location in the book, will more than likely be a discussion for next week. So that being said, instead of going off my memory, if it's okay, since we're probably not going to get to the Water Fund tonight anyways, if we can come back next week with that information for you when we actually go through the, when we actually go through the Water Fund.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Is sewer rates in the same area then? Are you?
Correct, on the same fund.
Would you mind doing sewer and water together then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments, before we get to page 86? So 85 and earlier. Alderman Shaki?
To put it in easy terms, the city of Chicago charges DuPage Water Commission a certain amount of money, and they raise it as they see fit. The DuPage County Water Commission increases its charge to us, depending on what their rate increase is. So all we're doing is passing on to an enterprise fund exactly what we're being charged, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Predominantly, that's correct. This last set of rate increases did have an additional component built in for capital outlay, for an additional, so while that is fundamentally correct, that the rates are going up because the Water Commission is raising them, there is an extra component in there. Part of it, part of the extra component is for us, for our salaries going up for the union contracts, and part of it is for the increased, we want to increase capital spending in the Water and Sewer Fund to help maintain the infrastructure in the Water Fund.
In other words, we need the surplus for water breaks, for pipe replacement, for, I mean, there's flooding in all parts of town, and we may have to use some of that money to replace pipes, replace, replace something to alleviate the flooding. I mean, there's flooding in Ward 3, on Prospect over there, and we may have to come up with the, the engineers come up with an idea of how to solve that problem over there. And we've got the creek, and then we've got the other side of town, and the fourth ward has, so in other words, the money, surplus money we have is there to take care of these extra breaks and so forth, and extra replacements, right?
Yeah, for the, for the extra main breaks, to replace aging, aging infrastructure. You know, you just passed a contract tonight to replace the water mains on Irving, Addison Road.
Yep.
Which is going to be a two-year project. Some of that surplus money, it's going to the engineering contract you just passed tonight to construct a new treatment plant. So it's all going towards the infrastructure, the pipes in the ground, the new treatment plant at some point. Basically, the water and sewer section of your CIP is what, that, most of that extra money is, is going to. It's the, that 20 pages, 25 pages out of the CIP.
People want their faucet to work.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Madam Chairman, are you going to do a roll call vote after we're done with 84, 85, 86? Maybe, yeah, 84, 85?
Mr. Wilson, technically, we probably, I'd rather not until the whole, all the other departments and funds are approved. And that would be part of the overall approval of the budget. Would that be correct?
That would, not to, but, yeah, well, if you want to, you can, you have the gavel, so you can, if you want to, you can.
I was kind of looking for approval of these four, five, of these three pages, so we could go on and do a roll call vote.
I mean, that's, if you guys, I mean, if we have a consensus that everybody agrees that these numbers are okay, we can move on. It's whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
Are you requesting that? I'm okay with that. Do you want to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
But is that, actually, I hate to interrupt, there was a motion and a second to approve the whole General Fund. So with that-
And with that, I call the question.
And that would be all the departments within that General Fund? Not necessarily, okay.
Just the three pages, correct?
No.
Just the motion?
No.
I'm going to withdraw my motion. And does a second agree? Okay. So that's off the table. And your motion is going to be to approve-
My motion, my motion is to approve the 83, 84, 85 page.
And I'm going to second it.
And you want, you going to do a roll call?
I'm going to call the question.
I'm calling the question.
Yep. Alderman Police?
A call to question means end of discussion, correct?
I thought I had to call the question and answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, would you?
What is, what does Parliament rule?
Thanks. I appreciate that. A call of the question is to end the debate. That must be seconded, and there must be a majority to call the question. If that is passed, then there is no further discussion.
So we have a, we have a motion for approving 34?
There's a motion to call the vote. I'll second it.
Okay, then, then I withdraw my second. There's a motion and a second, just to vote on this, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Will the minute take or call the roll?
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Cadella?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have to see what I'm approving here. Because I'm confused at this motion. No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Four to four.
And then Mr. Mayor, I believe, would have to-
No, I'm not a member of the committee. That motion fails.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
That motion pass or fail? Fail.
Motion failed on a four to four vote.
All right.
Alderman Police?
Can I say something?
One moment, I'm going to call on Alderman Police, and I'll call on you, Alderman Coles. Alderman Police?
Brad, I understand the pass-through between the county, the city of Chicago, the county, DuPage Water Commission. Basically, when I got on the council, we were told we're losing 220,000. Our goal was a million dollars. So we're at 800,000. So basically, we've swung a million dollars. So we are making money. And the next two increases are going to make us another million dollars. Is that correct?
That is not correct. But what I hear you saying, Alderman Police, is that we're making money on water rates, and it's more a question of, are we going to subsidize or not? Because we have Irving Park faced ahead of us for $6 million, of which the budget does not even, the water rates are not accomplishing that cost. They're not accomplishing $20 million of a treatment plant. Not even to mention that we're going to have to do a study of all the infrastructure to really determine the cost of the, of the pipes, et cetera, which could be several million. And the water rates, even with these increases, are not covering that. So it's more a question of, where are we going to get more money? Not necessarily that we're making money on, on, on water rates. Alderman Coles?
I have just one thing to say. I realize that you're new, Roy. We've never done page by page and voted page by page. We always voted when we're all done with the book. So voting page by page is absolutely wrong. We can't do it-
Sections.
We can't do it page by page. We'll be here for 20 days, doing one page at a time, and you want to be here till 3:00 in the morning? That's up to you, but I'm not going to be here.
I wasn't-
So I just want to let you know, that if you're doing it page by page, you're doing it wrong.
I wasn't, I wasn't looking at page by page, I was looking at a section.
You're looking at it page by page. You do three pages, and then you want to vote on it.
But that's one section.
That's wrong.
Okay, all right, all right.
That's wrong. Let me finish. That's wrong. We always voted, we always did the whole book, and then we voted on the whole book. So you want to change things? Fine. You get them changed, and I'll vote, continue to vote no.
Mr. Murris?
Two things. I think we're talking a little bit too much about the Water Fund tonight, because we've already stated that we're going to talk about it the next committee. The second, more important thing is, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, because if you look at page 84, you've got all the departments listed in here for expenditures. I don't think it, it really doesn't matter if you approve it now, because we're going to go line by line through each department anyway. So we should just move on to administration, and just get a general consensus after administration, move on to finance, et cetera, et cetera. So I would recommend that we just start talking about administration.
Okay, I'm going to, I completely agree. I'm on page 86 through, 80, through page 90. Is there any questions, comments? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
We in administration, right?
Yes.
I'm going to make sure I'm on the right.
Administration, yep.
Okay. Professional services for IT, why are we putting $24,000 into that?
Mr. Murris?
That number consists of three things. It's, it's pretty standard. It's been in there the whole time. It's the Springbrook Maintenance Agreement that we have every year for our financial software. It's the electronic scanning that we outsource every year. We outsource a certain amount of scanning each and every year for, I think, the past five years. And then the third item is for services provided by a Roskor, who handles the council chambers and the control room. Those are areas of expertise that our current IT professional doesn't quite have yet. I mean, this is a pretty complicated system. So he's working with them. So those three are standard every year.
Okay. And the reason why we're seeing zeros in previous years is because this was initially budgeted out of a different section. So that's why we're seeing the zeros, correct, Mr. Murris?
Correct.
Where was it?
IT used to have its own accounting, it used to be IT professional services and IT office equipment. We just eliminated that and moved it into administration, as Brad had mentioned before.
Okay. And then, and then the engineer service for 182,000, is that, that, is that the contract that we have?
That's the, that's the contract with Baxter and Woodman that we passed a couple of months back. Engineering used to have its own department, its own portion of the budget. We eliminated that. Now all their stuff is in admin.
It's all in one roll. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the administration fund? I make a motion to approve the administration fund as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Just quick point of clarification. That's the administration department.
Oh, and I said fund. Okay, thank you. Thanks for the correction. Okay, so I meant my motion to say department.
Yes.
Yep. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Yes, one opposed.
Two opositions, motion passes. Next department is City Clerk. Any questions on City Clerk department? I make a, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Let me ask you this question. The education and training, now, in this budget, there's a, and I don't know where it's at, which one, again, I can't remember, the tuition reimbursement is in this budget. Now, this increase of $400, this tuition reimbursement, or is this? And hear me out for a minute here, guys. I have no, I have a problem. We sat here last year, and we eliminated tuition reimbursement, but we made a speculation for two or three people that were finishing up classes last year, and we left the money in there to pay their, since they were already enrolled in the class. And we have always left money in the budget for people that have to maintain their licenses to keep the city afloat, because they have to have those licenses. Now, my $400 question here, is this tuition reimbursement, or is this a training that they have to have to keep their license in place?
Two totally separate items that you really need to differentiate here. The one item, tuition reimbursement, is in central services. We're not there yet. This is for continuing certifications, or getting clerks' classes, things like that, not continuing education towards like a bachelor's degree. Totally different.
I make a motion to approve the City Clerk's department budget as presented. Is there a second?
Yes.
On a question? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two opositions, motion passes. Next item is the Community Development Department. Any questions, comments? Oh, there are actually some expanded requests in this section, one being the new full-time position of code enforcement officer. And are there any questions, concerns, or disagreement on this expansion? Next expanded item is the Community Development, Mr. Murris, can you go into the second page of the expanded here? For 15,000?
Yes, this was an item that, we touched on the Economic Development Fund a little before. This was an item that we typically could have taken out of that fund. We previously, you know, produced some folders and some items like that. This 15,000 would be taken out of Community Development Department line item for something like a community video, or improving a special section of the website with special designing, and other items like that, that we don't account for anywhere else in the budget anymore. So this would be an appropriate spot to take that out of. So this was a community development recommendation. I signed off on it, because again, we don't have a mechanism for that anywhere else in the budget. So if it is something that we want to dabble in as far as promoting the city, this may be an appropriate route.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments on this expanded recommendation? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
All right. I have, this one, I'm having a rough time to vote yes for this one. My question is, you asking $15,000 to promote the city of Wooddale on videos and all the other stuff? Okay? We can't promote that in our house here. I mean, you asking 15 Gs here. I mean, I just don't, it just doesn't sell to me that, you're looking at 15, I mean, we got a, we got a guy that goes to, we got a guy that goes out state to promote business, bring business here. Word of mouth. I mean, we haven't done this in the past, and you know what? I'm having a really rough time taking this one.
And I understand that view. However, in these economic times, we need to invest in our community, and if you, if you look at it, $15,000 is a very small amount of money, when you think of the return that we could get on that investment. We had the website, thought of generating business for our local businesses. It was a $3,000 or $6,000 investment, and it got rejected. It pains me when I hear this, that if we make a small investment, that the outcome could be dramatic. And I certainly do support this. Alderman Roy Wesley?
To make a video for the website, I did some research that other towns did. They did a background search of how their community has grown, and they did the schools and the parks, and did a video around town. That's going to cost anywhere from $7,000 to $10,000. And that's important, and that's how you, you create other businesses to come into Wooddale, to show what you have. You know, the web is a very powerful tool, and we're not using it to the full extent. I do have a problem with putting it as miscellaneous and printing, et cetera, in there. I don't think we, we need to spend 15, extra money on, on pieces of paper. I think we need to promote it more of, more of as a tool on the web and, and our, our site, our own site. So I'm, I'm going to agree with the 15,000 here, but I don't want to use it for paper. And then another thing is, we're talking about conferences. They got $2,000. I take it that's the conference in Vegas?
Mr. Wilson?
No, if we're talking about the, the conference line item, no, that would be, I mean, we could take funds out of that for the Las Vegas, but that would be for a conference that I typically would attend, and then, you know, there is money is usually left from that, and that's, some of those funds go towards Ross's attendance out at the ICSC conference in, you know, that they have annually out in Las Vegas. But as far, I have to agree with Alderman Roy Wesley. I did some investigation as well on the video, and out of this $15,000, easily half of that could be spent doing a promotional video for the city, which is something that could be sent out to companies that are interested in coming into town, and they want a little more information. So you figure almost half of that money could be used for that video. In addition to that, we would be able to pool some of that money with some other funds to up, you know, as far as we're updating the website, and have a real Economic Development, Community Development page linked to the website. In addition to that, you know, Ross has been spending a lot of time with Choose DuPage and some of the other organizations, and what we can do is, we can participate as partners with them, and use some of this money to actually purchase booths at some of the expositions and that sort of a thing, and kind of work as a team, you know, promoting DuPage County, and in particular, the Wooddale area. So these funds are going to be kind of spread out over a couple of different things.
Okay. What I want to do is, I want to call on Alderman Shaki, then I'll go back to Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Shaki?
Yes, it's, it reads here, "The materials available will be a valuable tool for staff to use while demonstrating that Wooddale is the best place for a business to relocate or to establish a new business." Our manager was involved in this area, and if anybody should know, he should know what we need to get going with economic development. So if our manager's saying to get this, he's been there, I think we should be giving it to him. Like-
Absolutely. And I was actually out talking with my constituency this weekend, or week, and, and one of the residents in my immediate area, she, she said, you know what, Christine, Wooddale is a best kept secret, the accessibility to the highways, et cetera. So by not spending this 15,000, we're going to continue that best kept secret. It's, there are a lot of benefits to living in Wooddale, and we need to get the word out there and stimulate growth. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Like I said, I agree with the $15,000. But for this conference in Vegas, it's coming up in May, correct? Okay. I'd like to take that, that dollar amount out for Vegas, and see how the presentation goes after he comes back, and work on this $15,000, and we could put that conference back in if we need to, and see where it goes. Because I think, again, I keep on sitting there saying, let's use the web.
Okay, now, the con, it's my understanding, the conference is not in on this line item, but are you saying it's part of the fund?
It's part of his, this section.
I mean, department, department. Okay. Yes, Alderman. Not Alderman, Mr. Murris, yeah.
I can speak to that. Yeah, it is, it is in Community Development, listed as a line item, but not part of the 15,000. We seem to come to this every year, and we do usually, you know, we, we don't go until we get a sign-off from the council, as, as we did this year. So that's not a problem. We give pre and post reports of the conference. So Ross has currently signed up for this year's conference in May, so he'll be attending, per council sign-off. I'm not going to be attending this year. But before anybody goes next year, we will of course come back to you and get the sign-off again, if you like what you saw this year, same as we do every year.
Thank you.
Also, to add this year, we're also going to probably do a presentation. So each year when we go, we do step up our materials. The video could help, too, if we end up getting that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Won't be done by then, though.
I say, I'm leaning on leaving it in.
I'll revisit later, then.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm in favor as well. During the economic downturn, the only commercial development we've had in the city of Wooddale is that Thornton Gas Station, other than the industrial park. And Mr. Forrest was going to give us an update. There's been several new companies locating within the industrial park, and there's several companies looking to expand.
Correct. As you'll remember, a few weeks ago, I gave you an update of some new companies that have moved in. Since that time, what I can tell you is that the old Osco warehouse has now been filled with two tenants. One tenant has taken one half of the building, spent quite a bit of money remodeling, and we met yesterday with the new tenants that are taking the other half of the building. They're also trying to fast-track their perm-
They're also trying to fast-track their permits. They wanna be in by the end of May. It's a company that, well, maybe I shouldn't say too much right now, but it'll be a good addition to town. In addition, we have, there's a building at 1225 Michael that's been, a couple hundred thousand square feet, that's been vacant for quite a few years. And that has been taken over by a company, international company. They have, right now, they're going to be consolidating operations. They have an Addison and an Elk Grove, putting those in one location. And so, yeah, we've been getting, you know, a steady stream. We're getting more people coming in than we are leaving now. So that's a turnaround from what we were seeing over the last couple of years.
Any other questions, comments on this fund? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
John, maintenance on vehicles. How can we, didn't we just buy new vehicles? And maintenance is skyrocketing at high? Almost $1,500 over?
I think we might have deferred some activities for the following year. But there's something significant on that $2,500, right, Mr. Forrest?
Well, there's two maintenance vehicles. One is for work that's done in-house on the vehicles. And the other line item a little further down would be for work that's done where a car might have to be sent to a dealer to have some repair. And you're correct, Alderman, we did purchase new cars about a year and a half ago, but we still have two, staff using two other recycled city cars. And this year, we've been pretty fortunate. They haven't really needed much maintenance, but it's only a matter of time before we're gonna have to put some money into those two cars.
Any other questions, comments on this department? I make a motion to approve the community development department budget as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition, motion carries. The IT department is down to zero. So are you looking for an approval on the zeroed out, Mr. Murmas? Okay.
You're gonna vote on it?
Mr. Wilson.
Answer Alderman E. Wesley's question. It was there just to show the projected closeout from this year's budget. Same thing with the engineering department, just to properly present the closeout. So, well, I understand it's a zero. We at least wanted to account for the end of this fiscal year that we're operating in activities.
Next is the finance department. Are there any questions, comments on the finance department? Budget. I make a motion to approve the finance department budget as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Oh, wait, on the question? Alderman Coles.
Is this, Brad, is this up to date? You don't have two sets of books in the finance department? One to show us now and the other one to slip in?
I'm just kidding. We're gonna have a little laugh.
All right. Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Again, did you say all the tuition account is where?
It's in central services. Give me a second. Which begins on page 146.
Okay, so we're getting close. All right, thanks.
We're getting close. Okay, so, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is legal. Is there any questions, comments on legal department? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
One question. Labor, the legal labor, are we looking at that much of an increase?
Well, we're looking at only, we're gonna even out at $15,393 at the end of this year.
Yeah, but this is also proposed $40,000.
And that's, Mr. Mayor, you said it's the negotiations, right? The union?
We have two.
Negotiations. Mr. Wilson.
No, the, I'll say the PD sworn, the officers, that contract is gonna be completely open. And the re-opener with the $150 is gonna be in there too, so.
I make a motion to approve the legal department as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else on the question? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the police department. And are there any questions, comments on the police department? Mr. Alderman Lewitin.
Yes. Could you just tell me where in the budget is the training for Kalia? And do they have to go to special? Does the, basically have to go to special meetings and education to keep this up? And are we budgeting enough?
Mr. Vesta.
That actually comes out of two areas. We have an accreditation fund that, that account, it's in the lower end of the budget. That pays for our ongoing payment to Kalia for our communications and for our law enforcement accreditation. So that's the accreditation fee. That's the ongoing certification fee that pays for them to come onsite, do a review of our agency every three years for both of those units. The ongoing training that we go through to keep current with Kalia with our standards, with our training standards, be it use of force, firearms, all that, comes out of our education and training account. So, short answer, comes out of two accounts, but it is accounted for in that budget.
Can you tell me, is the city of Chicago Kalia qualified?
No, they're not.
So we have a higher rating than the city of Chicago based on this one question in this one area? You can be proud.
No, I'm very proud of our agency. We choose to go through an accreditation process and we're proud of it. And we'll just leave it at that.
How much do you say it costs every year to keep up the accreditation?
The annual ongoing fee for law enforcement accreditation is about $4,000 a year. For the communications division, that's about $2,400 a year. For that, we do over 450 standards that we're held to for the whole department. Use of force, training, education, hiring, recruiting, all those things. And then over 200 standards just dealing with communication. That deals with how we dispatch calls, how we handle calls.
I would just like to point out to everybody that's listening, if you'd go along with me and point to your name tag and note that you have the Kalia badge attached to it and that is a sign of distinction. And I've always supported you getting all the money that you need for your Kalia certification.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think someone else was seeking recognition. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Listen, the police chief is asking, answering the question. Greg, office equipment, can you just cover that a little bit? What is that, the floor, is that for the radio room and that?
Mr. Vesta.
That's not necessarily the radio room. We have actually a couple of file cabinets I know we need to replace.
Okay.
Chairs break down, whatever it may be.
Any other questions, comments on the police department budget? Yes, no? Okay. I make a motion to approve the police department budget as presented. Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the police and fire commission. Are there any questions, comments on the police and fire board commission? Did I skip the engineering? It sounded zero, right? Okay, okay. That's okay, okay. Any questions, comments? I make a motion to approve the police and fire commission department fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the engineering department. We are not going to discuss, approve. It's all zeroed out, officially closing it out in there. We're all good on that. Public Works Administration. Any questions, comments on the Public Works Administration Department? I make a motion to approve the Public Works Administration Department as presented. Is there a second? Anything else on the question? All in favor? Oh, wait, one question. I'll go back, no problem. Alderman Shaki.